Committee, if everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That would have been a surprise. Okay, everyone, welcome to the school committee meeting. We'll start off with the consent agenda. We have a number of sets of minutes this week, special minutes from June 4th, regular minutes from June 10th, executive from June 10th, special minutes from June 11th, regular and executive for June 24th, and that is the completion of our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second that motion.
Do you have a question?
I do. Let's see, can you tell, like on my face? The June 10th, the open session?
Hang on a second, let me pull it up.
June 24?
June 10th.
June 10th, 6K.
Okay, got it.
Vote to approve one layoff, one nonrenewal. Yes.
And we have one vote, but it didn't list the other vote. Because we voted for the nonrenewal and then the layoff.
You're saying we voted separately?
Yes.
Okay, I'll ask Mrs. Mendez to go back and correct that on the minutes and resubmit them for our next meeting.
And it was four to one.
Are we looking at K?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, it's a relatively small change. Is everyone okay if we just ask Mrs. Mendez to make a change to the final copy so we don't have to go back again?
So it should be four to one?
Should be a second vote, so the, and Kim, if I'm, it's the layoff you would have voted against?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, who, who, man, I'm confused. So, it says vote to approve one layoff, one nonrenewal, but it never says who it is.
Nor do we.
It's just one vote.
Okay, I should have.
We never put the names.
I know, I guess I used to, and I just had a flashback. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Because then nobody knows. Okay, so we're all done.
So could I have a vote to approve the minutes with that one change in item 6K on June 10th? From motion passed five zero to two separate votes. Motion for one layoff was four to one with Ms. Pocket dissenting, and one nonrenewal that was unanimous. All those in favor? Okay, four zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Good catch. So chairperson's remarks. On occasion, I will have this on the agenda if I have an announcement or something to tell you all about. And I just really wanted to use this opportunity this evening to, once and for all, welcome our new superintendent, Mr. Haskins, to his first meeting of our school committee as a member of our administration, and I want to thank you for being here. Welcome aboard and look forward to a very long and prosperous relationship with you. Thank you. So with that said, I am now going to turn it over to item A, superintendent's update. Mr. Haskins will be giving us a regular update in this forum, so I will turn it over to you, Chris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the school committee. I appreciate the warm welcome. I'd like to provide a brief overview of district level planning and updates from my initial meetings with leadership, municipal partners, and stakeholders. It has been a productive and informative start, and I want to thank everyone for the warm welcome. I've started by getting to know our central office staff, Chris, Carolyn, Dottie, Brendan, Sarah, Dan, and Mike, and I've met with all of our principals. This is a very welcoming and supportive administrative team who I'm going to enjoy getting to work alongside. Brendan and I have had the opportunity to meet with the town administrator and the department heads, and we will be a part of those monthly meetings moving forward. The town administrator, Patrick Jones, introduced me to the town council last night, and I had the opportunity to address them briefly. Some updates about our operations, we have received one resignation, Kelsey Murphy, Algebra I teacher at the high school. This position has been posted, and Sue Craven, the principal, has been monitoring the job application site for qualified applicants. There are a few vacant positions that we are making progress on, including a special education teacher for whom we are awaiting references, and a social worker who is currently considering an offer and would be recalled to the position. There are currently two teaching assistant positions open at the middle school and two teaching positions, teaching assistant positions open at the high school, and we are actively seeking candidates for those positions. We are planning a summer staff appreciation barbecue that will be scheduled in August, and this year we'll be combining the school and the town departments. So the summer staff appreciation barbecue is an annual tradition, a great way to recognize the hard work of our employees who work during the summer months. It's kind of a skeleton staff over the summer, as you know, and they work every day. So this barbecue is a great way to unwind and recognize their efforts. I'll get you the date and location if you'd like to stop by and join us. You know, that Brendan and I have had multiple meetings to address the $1.3 million deficit in the fiscal year '25 budget. We are working on an initial deficit reduction plan, which is currently in development. A working group is being formed and will include school committee chair, town council president, the town administrator, myself, our executive director of finance, the treasurer, and legal counsel regarding the FY '25 budget deficit. And at any time, feel free to interrupt me as I, as I roll through these. We are currently planning facilities walkthroughs with our school leaders and our district team over the next few weeks to assess our summer projects. As you would imagine, the priority right now is the grade four transition, which will be housed in the middle school. Those classroom floors have all been finished, all of the furniture, materials, and technology have been moved and installed. And I know Sarah will give us a bigger update on the grade four transition program, but I can tell you that having walked through those classrooms today, they absolutely look like elementary classrooms. They are clean, the teachers are in there getting those classrooms ready for students. The hallways are still a work in progress. The walls were washed today in preparation for painting tomorrow. The fourth grade library space looks great. The art, music, health flex space looks great. One set of lockers has been removed from the hallways, and the others will be over the coming weeks, and everything is moving according to plan. Related to our communications, I've begun planning for our August advance, which is what we call our retreat. As Dr. Sanquiochi said, we never retreat, always, always advance. And this is an opportunity for our district leaders, principals, school leaders, and teacher leaders to come together. We are planning that for August 19th and 20th at the Fall River Country Club. I want to thank Brendan for his connections there at the country club. As you know, we're in a tight fiscal year, so that suggestion was welcomed, and we will be there the 19th and the 20th. Our school committee is invited to attend on the afternoon of the 20th. If you are available, please join us. I have shared a superintendent's welcome message and photo on our website, and an article from the Secana Times was published online today, and the print edition will be available tomorrow. They did a short interview with me, and so you can read that. And I am currently working with principals to secure dates for our community outreach events at each school. I will be scheduling those probably for the beginning of August. These events will be interactive sessions designed to facilitate conversations about what our community feels are the strengths of the Tiverton schools, as well as opportunities that they see for growth and improvement. In closing, I want to thank the school committee, the leadership team, and the community for your collaboration as we prepare to open this important school year. My focus, as I have said, is on transparency, stability, and a strong start for our staff and students. I look forward to working together to address our challenges and celebrate our collective progress. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move into general business. We have a number of items to tackle this evening. First up, item A, vote to accept a grant award, 21st Century Tech and Equipment Fund in the amount of $20,213. Ms. Cusomano?
Well, it's a great place to bring good news to. So there was a grant that was due in May, and it's called the 21st Century Technology Equipment Fund Application. I turned myself off. It was constructed in a particular way so that we can reach as many students as possible. So I looked at the grant, and I said, well, which way can we ask for materials or equipment and technology that would meet all our students' needs? And also, there were two timelines, one to be done by September 1st or by the end of, end of the school year. So I elected to look for something that was manageable, easy to use, and manually get things in the classroom by September 1st. So we have to get this in by September 1st. So in front of you, there is a document at some point you all have to sign in order for us to submit to RIDE tomorrow so that I can order all the materials. The particular grant is going to look predominantly at two classrooms, two chemistry classrooms. So what they'll be equipped with now is, first of all, several years ago, the school committee was kind enough to work on our ventilation project right before COVID, and we got recognized for that. And during that time period, we had done some work with our propane system, and we made some adjustments, but they never were quite back up to speed. So this was an opportunity for us to ask for funding in order to bring all of our propane bunsen burner systems up to speed. So that will be a cost that will be absorbed by the grant. And that will be for both chemistry classrooms. That will take care of the main van, main valves. The side valves, all 12 setups in both classrooms. It'll also have a lock system so that students may not want to just maybe fidget with them so they can kind of be locked down. So that's one of the things in the grant. Also, the grant was asking whether it'd be a project-based learning maker space, so I basically checked off that part. And how many CTE students can we reach 100%? So in those rooms, each one will be having equipped a 3D printer, each with their own filaments and refilling stations as well. In fact, I'm going to have to reach out to Carolyn because I have to get ahold of Tyler because he's going to help me set it up. He told me if we get the grant, so, or not former graduates, well, 2025 graduate, will come back and help me set that up. We'll also have some touchscreen televisions in there. It'll be also part of the grant. And we also have some mobile collaborative stations. So there'll be four of those, two in each of the chemistry classrooms. There are giant whiteboards that come apart so students can collaborate throughout the classroom, or they can come together as another table. So those tables in those rooms are not stationary, but those rooms will be able to move around as well. Also in there is we have two mobile storage units that look like the lab desk. They match the actual aesthetics, and we can store all our equipment in there. We also have the ability to use some Vernier equipment. So there was some equipment that we were wanting to get, these LabQuest minis. And they're by Vernier, which is an excellent product. And these basically attach to our Chromebooks, and you could do all different types of sensors. So we can use it in our science classrooms, in all our CTE programs, our engineering, our carpentry, our public safety, plant science, CNA, visual arts, and computer science. All could use this. And then we also invested in two sets of software that have three-year licenses that the entire school has unlimited access to. So one will give us a graphical analysis, and the other one will have video analysis, which will help support our math, learning, and growth. We also will have, I think I've hit that all, and that's, that's pretty much what we have in there. So the grant comes out to be $20,000, and as soon as we sign those grants, we ship them off to RIDE. And then we get to immediately start ordering the materials. It's all in the area and accessible. I just want to first take the opportunity to thank everybody supporting me with this. I'd like to thank Principal Sue Craven for giving me the access to the grant, allowing me to run with it. She was great about being supportive as usual. I'd like to thank Brendan for going through all the finances, making sure I did exactly what I needed to, and Danny and Marco for supporting me and making sure that some of the things we were selecting were things that we didn't already have here. And also the school committee for signing off on this, and, and Mr. Haskins for being part of it now too, and Sarah Krager as well.
So do I have a motion to accept the 21st Century Tech and Equipment Grant in the amount of $20,213?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Anyone have any discussion points or questions?
Just curious, Ms. Cusomano?
Yes.
The, the three software programs that you're getting, are those going to be bought outright? Are we going to be paying on those going forward?
It's a, it's a, right upfront, three years possible. We normally would like to usually get those year to year, but we haven't had these in a while, so I saw the opportunity to get a three-year license for the video as well as the graphical. So it could be used by the math department, the science department, all the CTE programs.
Okay, and then after three years, we would have to pick that up, that cost?
I'll find another grant for that.
All right, I know you will. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do want to comment on the laundry list of purchases that are included for this $20,000. That's pretty awesome. And you're mentioning that the bulk, this work will be done by September.
It's all stuff that we can do. So like, for example, anything technology-related, I'm going to reach out to Dave Ferris because he's very versed in Vernier. He's ordered some stuff there before. So he and I will coordinate that. And yeah, technology, I already spoke with Danny ahead of time. I spoke with Brendan ahead of time. So everything's, whatever we need to do, I pretty much got everything ready to happen. And if you all have a chance to sign this right now, it'd be great.
Okay, start sending it around.
Okay.
Oh, before we, before we do that, are there any other comments, questions? All right, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Now we can sign. Thank you. You have what?
We'll sign in next second.
Oh, okay, you have the paper? Perfect. Now, the, the only question I have on that, though, is we have a member missing this evening.
We have her signature.
You have her signature. Oh, look at this. Does she have an auto pin?
So Lee, so I, I do want to say the reason we have Jocelyn's signature is Newport Propane was part of this bid. So I want to thank Peter Sherman and Jocelyn Sherman for helping us put this bid together because, excuse me, the quote, we still have to go out to bid for proper, proper hiring, but we did have to get a quote together, and Peter was, happened to be on site helping us volunteer for his, the track and field of the high school, stopped by, worked with Lee, got us the quote that we needed for it to be accepted by RIDE. So that's why Jocelyn's already familiar with the project and supportive of the project.
Very good. All right, thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Cusomano, as always, for being the bearer of good news. All right, next up, we have vote to approve administrative contract for Joao Aruda, Tiverton High School Assistant Principal. Will somebody be speaking to this?
Principal Sue Craven is on vacation today, so I'll speak on this. This is an agreement between Tiverton School Committee and Joao Aruda to serve as assistant principal of Tiverton High School for a term from July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2027. This will, shall be automatically renewed for one year. If either party does not notify the other in writing by June 30th, 2026, of its intent to terminate and shall automatically be renewed for a further term of one year. Shall I go through the terms of the contract?
It's pretty standard.
It, if I'm not mistaken, it is identical to the contract we had for the predecessor, with the exception of the dollars. So I don't think we need to go through it unless others. Yes, it will.
Have a question.
So how about if we?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept.
And do I have a second?
Second that motion.
Okay, now we're up for discussion. Go ahead, Mrs. Paulish.
Brendan, the budget?
Yes, so this dollar amount reflects the predecessor's dollar amount plus a 2% raise, which was given to the other administrators.
And then as, oh, yeah, I can see, as all other contracts, it's one-year finance, and then next years will have to be negotiated like we do for all of the rest of them.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's finance for one year, I guess is my, okay. And so this is the budget. Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a comment?
Yes.
Mr. Aruda, it's so nice to see you here. It was so nice to meet you at the Memorial Day Parade at the school. And, well, we'll see what we vote, right?
I also want to welcome you back, Mr. Aruda. I, I've heard nothing but good things, and I'm looking forward to your partnership with Mrs. Craven up at the high school. So I, I think our community is blessed to have you among us. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Welcome aboard. Come on up. Oh, you gotta, yeah. We can't hear you otherwise.
I just wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to once again work with the Tiverton School Department. I am extremely excited to collaborate with Principal Craven, faculty and staff, students and families. I'm looking forward, forward to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next up. Item 6C, post-retirement health insurance coverage. As per the memo and as per our discussion in executive session on June 10th, I'm asking for a vote to confirm our decision to continue health insurance benefits for Dr. Sanquiochi at the current co-pay rate until March of 2026, which is when he'll be turning 65. And as a reminder to everyone, this has been past practice for all retiring employees who have not yet reached the age of 65. Do I have a motion to approve the post-retirement health insurance benefit?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Kim?
No, I just feel we have a deficit.
You had your opportunity.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that a no?
That is a no.
Okay.
Three to one. Thank you. Okay, next up, fourth grade transition update, Mrs. Krager.
Thank you. You have in your packet there just a brief update of the grade four transition to Tiverton Middle School. We are, as Superintendent Haskins said, making steady progress and remain focused on ensuring a smooth, student-centered move. We do have a grade four transition hub that is up on our website, and Danny and team are going to bring that up for you to look at while I go through this. It is there to support families and staff with up-to-date resources and information. Many of the items on this hub came from the focus group work that we did with the 18 individuals who are on that focus group of parents and teachers and administrators. So lots of information on there. If you were to hit each one of those, you'll get, dig a little bit deeper into each. So go ahead and look at that at your convenience. The grade four wing, what we're calling the Rising Tigers hallway, that was actually, we surveyed our incoming fourth grade students, and they chose that for their name or their hallway. So that Rising Tigers hallway has been thoroughly cleaned and prepared. Our facilities and custodial staff were on point. It was done before the timeline, so that was great news. Teacher materials, furniture, and technology has all been moved into the classrooms. And again, like Superintendent Haskins said, teachers have already started accessing, accessing their rooms and setting them up. Our next focus group meeting is set for Monday, next Monday, the 21st. Class assignments will be shared with families on August 4th. Our open house is planned for September 11th. There will be tours in August. Students and families will be asked to come in and tour the building again, seeing some of their classrooms. Those dates will be scheduled, and actually, you can see that in the website as well, but that will be scheduled as well. So moving forward and full steam ahead. It all looks great.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Sarah, the grade four transition hub, is that on the website, our Tiverton Public Schools?
Yep, Tiverton Public Schools is right under parent resources. It's the first link.
Parent resource, okay.
And the question and answer part of that is probably the most robust, and those questions came from our focus group, which they brought from other parents. So we tried to put that clearly on the question and answer as part of that hub.
Okay. And the meeting on the 21st, is that at the, the middle school?
We're actually doing that through Zoom.
Oh, okay.
Or Google Meet.
The class lists with the students that are coming from the two different, well, three different elementary schools, were they able to kind of keep those kids together in those classrooms with their teachers?
Principals Itole and the guidance counselors at Tiverton Middle School met with the principal and guidance counselors and current third-grade teachers to develop lists. All of the students are not, Fort Barton students are not with Fort Barton, may not be with Fort Barton teachers, or Pecasset students may not be with Pecasset teachers. They did mix some of them, just, there are a lot of variables that go into making class lists. You know, something as simple as male and female in a classroom, but we also look at certain behaviors and learning styles and things like that. So we took all of that into account, and together with the third-grade teachers, created those lists.
And if I'm not mistaken, this was something that was asked and, and approached at the parent meeting that we had back in early spring?
Yep, it was.
And that was, you know, the whole goal there was for benefit of the students and their experience, not necessarily on exactly who they're going to share a classroom with.
Right. And the part of the, the teachers who are part of that fourth grade focus group, there's one third-grade teacher, Mrs. Truver, and then three fourth-grade teachers. So they have, have a big voice when we were deciding some of that.
The one question I have, are the class assignments for all families going out on August 4th?
Yes.
Or just this cohort?
Just, I know that it's just going out for the fourth grade group. I'm not, I'm not sure when fifth or eighth is going out. Is that what you mean? I can get that answer for you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate knowing that, just, in case there's confusion out there.
Sure.
And I understand that, you know, we, we do want, we do have special handling for the fourth graders especially this year. But I'm sure others will be saying, well, where's my class assignment?
Yeah.
So, okay. Anyone else?
Kim, were you all set?
I'm all set, thank you.
Just a comment. I just want to thank you.
You're welcome.
And the staff, everyone at the middle school, those focus groups. I know there was so much anticipation, and change is hard, and I know how hard you all have worked together, and I truly, truly am so appreciative of the people that have taken their time, and it's been a lot of time. So I want to acknowledge that, to come together and figure out a positive way forward, and I really do appreciate that, and I just want to call that out.
Thank you. I, I hope that has everything that I have reported out, or even what's on our website, has captured that. That focus group, every, we had 18 parents, and they didn't, every 18, every one of those parents came to each meeting we had. They never missed a meeting. And it was all very much positive-focused, problem-solving-focused. I honestly couldn't have asked for a better group to work with, so I'm glad you see that.
Very good. Anything else from anyone? All right, we will then move on to the next item on the agenda, the transition program. I'll turn it right back to you.
Okay, so we are, we have been developing our new transition program for students 18 to 22 here in Tiverton, and we are super excited about the progress and looking forward to launching the program in the fall. The designated classroom space at Fort Barton is now ready. Furniture and materials will soon, soon be transferred from Tiverton High School, and then in addition to a few new materials. Our transition program teacher, Mr. Jamie Ross, will begin setting up this space to ensure that it's age-appropriate and supportive of students' needs. Mr. Ross has been working in our extended school year program, which just, just ended last week. We're also making progress with the staffing and training that needed to occur. One of our teacher assistants have completed the job coach training, and the second one is scheduled to be trained later this summer. We're actually hosting the training here in Tiverton, so we're going to have some other folks from other districts coming. But I'm going to actually offer that up to other teacher assistants, just in case they may want to move into that program at some time, so they'll have access to that. The transition program teacher holds a chauffeur's license for that van, and we are planning for at least one additional staff member to obtain one as well, just to support the transportation for a community-based. just to support the transportation for community-based instruction and job sites. The Fort Barton cafeteria kitchen is going to be used for most of the life skills instruction, including cooking, cleaning, laundry and safety routines, along with activities that support functional communication and social skills. Vocational placements, we use something called student-centered planning through a career development plan for our students. So vocational placements will be determined using that framework. And that is to ensure meaningful individualized experience for each of the students. Mr. Ross will be scheduling community outings to promote independence and real-world skill-building. The program will use the unique learning system. It is a standards-based curriculum specifically designed for students with complex needs. It includes differentiated instruction in academic, social and life skills, all aligned with the students' transition goals. So again, this was a much-needed opportunity for students in Tiverton after the region dissolved because that program was in Middletown. So now we get to have our Tiverton students closer, a little closer in Tiverton and closer to businesses around here and their community. So we are also moving and shaking on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Krager.
You're welcome.
I just have two questions.
Yeah.
How many students will we have in this program, both from Tiverton and outside?
So we're starting just with Tiverton students right now. We'll have eight students starting this year.
And the plan would be then to open it up to other communities?
To tuition in.
Okay. Have you gotten engagement from many of the local businesses yet? Because I know you always ran it out of Middletown, and I know there was that partnership with Newport Hospital. I'm not sure about others. Any local?
We have had students go out into the community in Tiverton, even though it was housed in Middletown. We did try and have our Tiverton students closer to Tiverton. There were several businesses in that Fall River shopping area where Old Navy is. Right, you guys know where that is. Cell phones marketplace. And around that area, there were several businesses that, where partnerships were made. But it really depends on the student. Like if the student is into cell phones, we're going to try and get them a job at AT&amp;T or Verizon. So that's what that student-centered planning is all about. Or if a student is interested in working with children, we try and get them into our, they've worked in some of our preschool programs or a local preschool program. So it really is dependent on the student. And that is the job, part of the job of Mr. Ross as the new teacher to make those partnerships, create those partnerships.
I will yield the floor, anyone else?
You said that there were furniture and materials being transferred from the high school? What exactly is being taken from the high school and how is that being replaced?
So good question. We currently do not have any students at the high school who require a life skills program.
Wow.
Yes. So we had students move or go into other placements. So the remaining students were all transition students. Now, we could get a student who requires that level of support and will have to shift and make those arrangements if that should occur. But we are able to use, like some of that unique curriculum was already in that program. So instead of having to purchase that right now, we can move that over to the new transition program, as well as some of the cooking things that they had in place too.
Okay, so they took the stove from here?
There's actually, there's a stove in the kitchen at Fort Barton. Fort Barton has most of the equipment in that kitchen that they have in the cafeteria. We do have to just bring in a washer and dryer.
There's a, did they bring a stove in? Because the elementary schools just had those warming towers. They never had stoves in the kitchens.
I think there's a stove, right? At Fort Barton?
Mr. Ruda does a Thanksgiving turkey every year and he utilized it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so some of that equipment.
Sorry.
Some of that, Kim, everything's equipped, as Sarah said. Chotwells did work with me, we did come in and replace some things. Pecasset needed a new steamer, so the Fort Barton steamer will be going to Pecasset instead of using, asking for capital money. So those things that could be shifted around. Middle School got some extra pots and pans with the increase of students, stuff like that. But Fort Barton is fully equipped in the kitchen.
Okay, and next year, how's, not this coming school year, but the year after that, will there be kids, more kids coming to the life skills program at the high school? How's that looking so far?
So I want to be a little bit cautious because if it's less than 10, it's personally identifiable information. There will be planning for a group, for students who require some sort of life skills for the following year.
Okay, I'm just, if all that stuff's gone, it's like,
Yep.
how are we getting it back? And they'll have a bed, to make beds, and they'll be washing dishes and all that stuff?
Exactly, yep, all of that will be there. In fact, they do have, Fort Barton had some beds in the nurses' office already. So we're going to be using those and making that kind of a room, a bedroom area. So we're going, the classroom is using, the program's using one large classroom, the kitchen and like where the nurses' station was.
Okay. And the building cleaning and the maintenance, is that, well, the maintenance obviously wouldn't be, but would they be cleaning the building too as part of their?
Yeah, so part of a split shift custodian here at the high school, he will have, we would be working shifts to make Fort Barton clean as well.
Okay.
Yep, so it'd be taken care of. I just wanted to add to your, one of your questions, Kim, is also part of the $312,605 that the town council previously approved for capital. Seven or eight thousand, I can't remember the exact number, was part of special ed equipment, which is adaptive equipment and other needs we need for that program as well. So, so thankful to the town council for that approval.
Great. Thank you.
I have one question. Brendan, you seem like you're the mover of the supplies or the planning of that. What happened, if you know, to, all our stuff that was down in our, what was called Consumer Science Program downstairs? We had.
Elaine, I can't hear you, could you?
We, we'll have it on.
Just pull it forward, make it closer.
We had quite a program down there. And there were tons and tons of dishes and pans and pots and small appliances. Did we take any of that to move?
No, so good question. So every Friday, the transition class will actually come to the high school and they bake and serve coffee to the staff. We pay anywhere between $2 and $4 for a coffee or smoothie. And, yep, we also, some days they bake muffins, et cetera. So whatever money they make from that sale, then Jamie Ross, the teacher, brings them to Market Basket Stop &amp; Shop that affords the materials for the next day. They actually always make a positive net impact. So they've gone to Roger Williams Zoo with that extra money, the movies, et cetera, so.
Great idea.
That's still being utilized by that team.
Great idea.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Thank you, I'm glad I asked the question.
I enjoy my coffee every Friday.
Thank you.
And that will continue next year, like Mr. Andrade said. And they also are planning to go, perhaps have the coffee cart in some of our other schools as well, so.
Great. Just quick, so you said eventually people from other districts, you know, other school districts can utilize this program, and it sounds like a great program. Any way we can figure out how to market that, guys? I mean, I think this sounds like just, you know, I know it's been successful. I'm happy to see it come back and, and just to afford this opportunity to other districts. I know, you know, depending upon the district, especially when the region closed, they don't have the programs that are necessarily as robust and successful as this one, so.
Yes, I had that experience, sorry, I just kind of interrupted. I had that experience in, for the region when we developed a similar program in Middletown for the, for the regional program. And because each of the high school life skills teachers or transition teachers, they're part of something called a transition life skills group. They meet on a bi-weekly, a bi-monthly basis, so the entire state comes together. That's when our teachers and our teacher assistants, if they're invited for a certain topic, learn about new, you know, new programs or new vocational activities. So that's an opportunity to get out, here's what our transition program looks like, here what we have, here's what we have to offer. And it is challenging for some districts to create a program when you have less than, you know, nine, like, we're kind of lucky that we have nine students that are in that age group right now to create a robust program. So if we lose one or two, we want to bring one or two in, right, from a different district. So we would be getting that out to, in that TLS group, teacher life skill group, and then as well as just reaching out to other special ed directors throughout the state.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sarah, would I be able to come and look at all that?
Totally.
I'd love to see it.
Yeah. We'll let you, anyone can come visit. I'll let you know when, yeah, when Mr. Ross kind of has it up and ready to roll. Perhaps you guys can even come when he's going to have the students and families come in prior to the school year starting, so we can tell you when that is too.
And the middle school too, can we look at that?
The middle school life skills class?
No, the fourth grade.
Oh, yeah.
The fourth grade, yes.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Sure.
Anybody else? All right, thank you very much, Sarah. Okay, next we have item F, vote to approve resolution through mediation of Rhode Island Council 94 and Tiverton School Department, case number 01-25-0002-2253, for employee working out of classification. And for those of us who are here this evening, I'll remind you that we discussed this during our executive session in detail on June 24th. So at this time, I'm asking for a motion to approve this resolution, this mediated resolution. I'll make that motion.
Oh, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Okay. Unanimous, thank you. All right. Time for Mr. Andrade to be on the hot seat. Item G, vote to approve Chotwells contract and selling price increase.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in front of you, I got a lot of information, I'll go through it at a high level detail. But the school department has increased school breakfast and lunch prices since school year 2018 to 2019. Obviously COVID had an effect on that. And then lastly, our USDA grants ended this school year. So there will be no more future USDA grants coming to Chotwells to be provided to the East Bay District. As you might know, we, Tiverton falls under the East Bay District of Chotwells. And what that is, is Little Compton, Tiverton, Portsmouth, Barrington, Middletown and Bristol Warren all utilize Chotwells under one umbrella. It's actually ran by Doug Fiori at Barrington, former business manager in Tiverton. He kind of does all the legwork for us from Ride, and we work side-by-side with Chotwells when it comes to that. We are responsible for our school program, of course, but Doug kind of runs the East Bay District for the items that are required to Ride. So in front of you this evening, it's the current versus proposed meal prices for the future. Obviously, the proposed rates are in response to rising food costs, labor, operational costs, and to ensure continued compliance with USDA requirements under the paid lunch equity tool. So currently, this past school year, and for many others prior to this, since 2018, 2019, the current rate for breakfast for preschool to third grade is $1.25. Obviously, I'm breaking up pre-K and third grade just for reference. Fourth will be together with fourth through 12th now, because we can't split the cashier for the fourth graders, unfortunately. So pre-K through three is $1.25, my proposed rate is $0.10 to $1.35. Breakfast for fourth grade through 12th grade is $1.40, proposed rate of $10.10, which would be $1.50. Lunch for K through three is $2.70, proposed increase of $0.25 to $2.95. And then lunch from four to 12th grade is $2.95, currently propose a $0.30 increase to $3.25. I list a couple of the rationales for the increase. Obviously, the cost increase, USDA loans are no longer available. We depleted that loan this school year. And as you will see in the comparison on page three, this is from Chotwells of May of 2025, so this doesn't provide any increase for any school district that occurred. Most of those increases are happening now in the, in the summer. I can tell you, I attended a business official meeting and almost every business manager was discussing price increases for their meal program. So as you can see, the prices I just mentioned are within the other East Bay community prices and pretty much in line with statewide average. They're either in line or under. So the reason, the second reason for the increase is on page five, you will see a profit or loss statement that was provided. This is what gets provided to Ride on our behalf through Chotwells. We are seeing a profit or loss for next school year of $47,910. So how I combat that, that loss of $48,000 is through this price increase. We are also in talks with Principal Craven and Chotwells for a program that has worked in Barrington and Middletown, been successful, the rollout occurred last year. What it is, is offering a stationary lunch meal for high school and middle school. Middle School has the proper space, but high school, we need to discuss the proper space for this upcoming school year. But what that station would be is a salad bar or taco bar, et cetera. For some reason, a lot of our students here at the high school, at the high school don't purchase as much as other high schools revenue-wise in comparison. Obviously, the enrollment's different, so that is part of the equation. But our high school students don't purchase as many meals as other high schools. So this was something that was discussed with Chotwells to hopefully turn that around. Again, this is not a revenue booster for Tiverton Public Schools, but I definitely don't want to end the year in a loss. So with those two things, we are, we are comfortable that we should be able to combat that loss. However, we also have other avenues to combat that loss, which I'll speak to in a couple of agenda items in FY '26. But at this time, any questions as far as the price increase is concerned, or the profit or loss of Chotwells?
So before we go any further into the discussion, the agenda says to vote to approve the Chotwells contract and selling price increase.
Yes. So part of this is to, if you give me approval on this price increase, I go tomorrow and sign the contract.
Aren't we responsible for signing contracts?
What is it?
Aren't we responsible for approving contracts?
You are, correct.
Then we need to see a copy of said contract in our package.
So the contract's the same, all your, all the changes is, is the?
No, we did not.
This is the same contract that's used, all the, it's not an actual contract. It's just given Chotwells permission to run out cafeteria. I don't have an actual standard contract, if you would. This is East Bay Chotwells. This is literally the documents they provide. So basically, you're approving the permission for Chotwells to provide lunch service again, breakfast and lunch service at the Tiverton Public Schools next year.
I think we have been given a copy of the entire East Bay agreement in the past.
Okay, so I haven't seen that. It's basically from talking.
You don't have a copy of that?
No, talking to Doug and team, this is basically what we do every year. We submit these, this full document to Ride. It gets approved and you basically approve, your approval tonight, I literally have a one-page with all those districts I mentioned on it, and we would sign for Chotwells to provide that service.
So that's, this is different, I guess that's why I'm trying to.
Yeah.
This is different than that Chotwells, the actual contract, this is completely, that we see every year when we.
Again, I would have to go back to the drawing board. I'm just, you know, obviously I'm new, this is my first year. But from what I'm told is, this is basically, we work with Chotwells and Ride. We do all this paperwork that you have in your backup. And then we, Doug sends around, Tiverton's the last one to sign it. Doug sends around a paper that all the districts sign, and I can show you that in executive session on. And I can show you that in executive session on my phone. So.
So there is no, like, contract?
Maybe there was a, again, I'm not, I'm not sure. It's just basically, you're given permission of Chartwell's to.
Continue working here.
Yeah, within, within this packet, there's like a one or two pager. You know what I mean? But it's nothing like a standard, yeah.
But you will be signing something.
I will be signing a one, it's basically a two pager that explains Chartwell's is providing lunch and breakfast to our students next year. And we're respons, what is it? With those, with these rates. And basically, all it says is, we're responsible to pay them, you know, per certain date, et cetera. You know, the basic terms, nothing like not a trans.
That is a contract.
Yeah, not a transportation contract that's 30 pages long. You know what I mean?
And I apologize for not reaching out to you sooner on this.
No, no worries, yeah.
I didn't even notice this till today.
Yeah, like I said, it's a good question. I really didn't either, other than, you know, there's many pages with many numbers on it that I put together, so.
So before we move any further, if I could get a motion to approve the Chartwell's, I hate to use the word contract, because it's not.
Yeah, you're pretty, again, you're pretty much given permission for them to.
Approve, to approve, approve Chartwell's as our lunch vendor and also approve the selling price increase. Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I have some. I'll let others go first.
Brendan, the email you sent along with that paperwork, the balances per school, the lunch balances. How are you, well, not you, but what's being done to collect that?
So different things are being done at the principal level. So that's a good, a good segue to a future topic I wanted to bring up that other school districts are doing, but I'll get to that in a second. But basically, use, top ones, the high school, I'll use them as example. Principal Craven would make you pay your balance before attending homecoming, going to a football game, basketball game. Same thing at the middle school, can't go to a dance. Elementary school's a little tougher, because, you know, I don't want to use the word legally. Might be the case, but we wouldn't really hold those students from a dance, because we would want them to interact in that age group.
Those aren't the big balances.
Yeah, those are not a big.
The middle school.
The middle school is the biggest balance. They just don't have as many events as the high schools, so it's a little tougher. However, we are working with the principals to, really, Shelley, Kamara, and Danny Andre work with the principals to attack those account balances. When I first came on board, the account balances were actually much higher, which I know you weren't here, Kim, but the rest of the school committee might remember.
Yep.
So we are doing, they're not great, but they're better. Other schools, through my Business Official Association, are starting to hire collection agencies. So you obviously can't go off the balance for someone that might have had a balance and then became a free reduced lunch individual. But the students that are paying full, full cost, you could collect them through the collection agency. If you Google it, East Province and Cranston are on, online, showing what they did in collections over the last couple of school years, and they've been very successful during the collection agency. But that would be a future discussion, if the school committee would like to entertain that.
What are the current, what's the current approach to collecting?
The principals would have to speak to that a little more. But the principals, again, are basically holding, well, first off, Shelley and team send emails very regularly. We do have a lunch policy that says anything that gets in the negatives of $50 gets, you get emails sent home. As far as what the principals do, I do know Principal Craven, again, holds that she wouldn't allow someone to buy a homecoming ticket or attend a football game and et cetera.
Ms. Donley Roche, do you mind? Thank you. At least get your perspective.
Good evening. It is a little bit tricky at the elementary level, of course. We are a full-serve district, which is a choice we make when we do go out to bid. And, and maybe that might be in answer to the earlier question. I don't believe we've gone out to bid. This isn't a new vendor at this time. But we're a full-serve district, and so we serve full. At this level, your committee has discussed in the past decisions around, which means that we serve everything. So it's not à la carte. And so we charge a full amount. Some districts don't do that. It's a, it's a Department of Agriculture decision, a choice that our district makes. And so we charge the full amount. At your level, in the past, some of you may recall talking about whether or not to have a lesser meal or our fourth choice, which is always a sun butter and jelly sandwich, and sort of limit the students who are full pay to just that choice, which would then maybe be a carrot stick situation for their families. As Brendan alluded to, we don't have something like that. So we certainly send the letters. And Ms. Kamara is great at supporting us with that, so that we know the balances. It's tricky. The other thing we try and do proactively, since we know we're going to continue at your current direction, to offer the full array of choices, which is three or four choices each day for students, is that we try and be proactive about really figuring out who may be eligible for free and reduced lunch and getting that information out early. And I know in districts that tackle this, trying to get all families to fill out that form is a, is an option, so that it's no shame. Everybody fills out that form at sort of the open house or back to school night and chases that eligibility. And if someone isn't eligible or generally would defer from filling out that form, it's as easy as just putting their name and saying, I choose not to fill this out, which still fills it out. So then there's no embarrassment for me if I think my family may be eligible in turning in a, an application. Everybody turns one in. So that's a way to be more proactive. It's tricky, because that's a big change in culture. But certainly, we try. And we never, of course, decline serving a student their, their full meal.
No, and that's, that's been a set matter of policy.
Absolutely, yes. But it's tricky. And any suggestions you have on how to sort of chase that funding, I'd love to take. I do pay attention to it, and I know we all do as principals, and try and just make sure anyone who may be eligible, especially for the reduced lunch pricing, which is sort of that in-between level, is eligible for it. I know at Pecassid, it's about 50% of our students who are eligible for free or reduced meals. But there may be more students who would be eligible were their families to submit the application.
So, so maybe at a future meeting, if you have some thoughts, your team, your admin team, your, your, you know, that, things that we could maybe change to help you, maybe that's, that would be appropriate for that discussion. But as far as this goes, you're doing your best you can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely, the principals are doing their best. Like I said, the, the total amount has decreased since I came on board, so.
That $50, so once a student hits $50 that they owe, then some kind of action?
Yes, and again, that's a.
Should we lower that a little?
That's a school committee policy, so you'd have to go through that whole process.
Okay.
That would have to be a future meeting.
Okay. Back when I started in 2008 at Pecassid School, I don't even know if this is legal, but she was withholding, the principal at the time was withholding report cards. Is that legal?
Uh, no.
And it's not really germane, right?
I know, but I mean, it did help, believe it or not.
Yeah, so that would be something, we should put that on a future agenda and discuss different ways that we might want to change policy to address those balances.
Yeah, and again, elementary is different from high school, middle school as well, so, yeah.
So looking at these price increases, we're pretty much anywhere from, I mean, it's only 10 cents, but it's 8% to like 10%. So given that we haven't raised them since 2018, that's probably reasonable, I think.
And definitely, if you look at the comparison again.
Yeah, to the other districts.
We're still lower than many districts, so.
All right, thank you.
And when it was raised in 2018, that was the amount that it was raised by? So it's not like inflations?
Yeah, it's, yeah, we haven't done anything since 2018, 2019.
And after that point, right, we went right into COVID. And we had a few years where everybody was getting lunch for free.
We also had a USDA grant, over $100,000 that was used. Mostly, you know, some of that was used for cafeteria repairs. That's why you haven't had a cap request for the cafeteria in a while. But we literally just depleted that. The last remaining balance was $7,000. That was just used on the June Chartwell's invoice. So we're going into next year zero.
So these price increases are for the full pay students only. Are there any increases for reduced pay students?
So reduced pay students would get reflected into these rates as well, at a reduced rate. So, yeah. So the summary is basically showing the full, the full-priced meal.
Okay. And, you know, as you mentioned, there, the USDA grant, for the first time in many years, there will be no USDA grant. And that is becoming a theme from the federal government. And so my question is, even with these price increases, are we looking at a deficit in our lunch program, truthfully, for 2026?
So we have one right now in this school year.
Yeah, and I saw it.
Yeah.
And we'll discuss that, yeah.
Yep. I, I, basically, conservative-wise, when we get to the revenue section of FY '26, I'm holding back some of the revenue, and that's to offset any, this, basically, this, this loss that would occur. 2025, 2026, we did beat the margin by 16,000. Unfortunately, we had utilized a lot of that USDA grant to fix and repair some of the many equipment that went down this school year, so.
Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, too, the closure of Fort Barton was supposed to be saving us some lunch expense as well?
Yes, because we, we will be eliminating some of employees, but that's kind of a union issue that Chartwell's is working through as well.
So is that reflected in this?
Not yet, because the employee, again, through the union, the, their union, they have to do some. It was requested by Tiverton to reduce their staff. They have to now provide that. They have to go through their, you know, their whole seniority and, and union grievance.
But as a vendor, they have no choice. Is that correct?
That is correct. They just have to find placement. It all depends how their union's written, basically, their CBA, you know what I mean?
Okay.
I did request that we reduce staff to battle. Unfortunately, we're at the, you're kind, again, my earlier comment, is this all had to be done and provided to Ride, and then now it gets the final approval, which is my signature stamp, as I said, if you all agree with everything in this packet. So that's another reason why you wouldn't, if you, if you were to go out to bid with a new, a new vendor, it's a, it's a big, long process as well. One, we're connected with all those East Bay schools. And then, two, it's a lunch program is a heavy lift to go out to find a new vendor.
Well, the, the one thing, and I know this is your first full year, but I can tell you that in previous years, every time we talked about this contract, Tiverton was in a deficit situation with Chartwell's every single year. So it's, you know, in hindsight, probably, we should have raised prices a while ago.
Yeah, when I first got this in front of me, it was at 98,000. So I've gotten it down to 48, so. And now I'm doing more work to bring that more down.
All right.
I wouldn't, to your point, the contract was always, I hate to use the word contract again, but it's always been signed based on that higher amount. This is the first year that I actually battled and tried to get it to zero. You know, but.
Well, I think it was, you know, we became complacent, knowing we'd be getting federal grants.
Correct.
And clearly, that's not a guarantee.
No.
So we, we have to tighten it up. And unfortunately, we can only raise it so much at a time, which, you know, I would not want to shock families.
No, and I'm hoping those revenue streams work out. I'm actually looking forward to it as an employee. Salad bar, sounds great. That's something I would come and get versus a chicken sandwich, you know what I mean? So employees can purchase as well. That's part of, that's in the packet. We do have a few teachers that do purchase. I did not propose, I did not put those price increases on the memo, but they are part of the packet here, so.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so we have a motion in a second. All of us in favor? Unanimous, thank you, Brendan.
Thank you.
All right, next up. FY '25 budget to actuals and unexpected revenue loss. Mr. Andre.
So this is a... So in your packet this evening, I provided a summary and then a backup detail and the figures. So if you don't mind keeping the summary on the first page and the last page of the packet, where all the figures are, where it says section B, C, D, and E. In front of you as I speak, it kind of explains where we, where we stand with this unexpected revenue loss and our kind of close to final budget deficit for FY '25.
So the final, the last page?
Yes, the last page, where it starts with section B in the top left corner. So as you all might recall, is, we adopted a budget in early June. I think it was June 29th, and then the school committee, I think that was the final appropriation by the school committee, was the June 29th meeting of 2024. Obviously, the FY '24 financials did not get completed till late September. So when I came on in late September, it's kind of when we started to finalize FY '24. We did recognize a shortfall, and we had to use Medicaid and fund balance that remained to offset that FY '24 shortfall, making a short in FY '25, because that same money was allotted for '25. So going to section B, you kind of see the original budget in a high-level detail, the projected new revenue as of October 1st, showing how we're utilizing some other one-time funds, such as the Eback sale on Warren Street, some Newport collaboration final payments, some remaining Medicaid, excuse me, remaining fund balance and Medicaid that was incoming this school year, along with CT tuition, miscellaneous grants, and other revenue streams. So as you can see, the change, we did still, we did still budget at that point in time using the 35 point, almost 35.8 million. However, fast forward to today, you can see the actuals in the far-right corner, along with the variance. So you can see our unexpected revenue loss totaled about 444,000. Part of that was 31,000 of CT tuition. Couple of students returned to their home districts, unfortunately. We did get rejected at a, a grant of 29,000. Fortunately, we did get accepted this year, FY '26, for the same grant at a little lower rate, which is good. Unfortunately, this doesn't help us for FY '25. Little money there to offset. The biggest hitters are the Eback real estate proceeds and Newport collaboration final payment. Unfortunately, when Peter attended those meetings, he was advised, as, as he said in school committee sessions, advised for a little more money that would be incoming. The Eback real estate proceeds came in a little under, unfortunately, from the original estimate, by 175,000. We do hope to still coop 100,000 of that, which I'll get to in a second. Same thing for Newport collaboration. We were hoping for a little more, but unfortunately, they had to hire a consulting service to finalize the books before the escrow kind of wind down. But lastly, we just had a pending lawsuit, as you all know, so that money's still being held up in the escrow accounts, which I'm labeling as regarding as deferred revenue. And then lastly, fund balance, as you know, part of the audit adjustment, the final FY '24 audit adjustment, did utilize 44,000 of that. And we did allocate some money to the lunch fund to offset the lunch fund for repairs and maintenance. So altogether, in section C, you can see your revenue, your new revenue of 35.2 million, expenditures of 36.7 million, deferred revenue. So this is when we hopefully have deferred revenue in the future that I would recommend the school committee, excuse me, the school committee approval to, once it comes in, to transfer to the town to continue to offset this deficit to a lower number. Part of that is from the Eback sale, as I just mentioned. Speaking to them, they're holding $100,000. We should know about the hold on, that says 623, I should say 723. We should know about the final hold in a couple of weeks when they have their Board of Directors' final meeting of when they will release that money. What happens was, they planned on releasing it earlier, but the Board of Directors decided to hold some money in escrow so they didn't have to crawl, claw it back from the districts. Newport Regional, that remaining money will be held pending the lawsuit that the trust is dealing with. City of Fall River, student tuition, this is. City of Fall River student tuition, this is actually going to be a discussion with the town council. As you might have heard last night, I know a couple of school committee members were in attendance, but the town council voted to approve a subcommittee to work and discuss the deficit reduction plan. We need to do this per Rhode Island general law. The town council and school committee has to come up with a final deficit reduction plan that we have to present to Division of Finance, Order General, and RIDE. Part of this, City of Fall River student tuition is tuition we are receiving this year and next year for students attending Tivon that are located in Saudi Ponds. That's a longstanding tradition of an agreement we have with the City of Fall River and their school department. So hoping, since the town council does not put this part of their revenue, I'm hoping they would consider basically helping the schools with their deficit. And again, that would be up to them in a discussion during that subcommittee meeting. Lastly, is FY26 state aid did increase based on the March 2025 enrollment. Basically, what they did was, a lot of the representatives, and I think Representative Edwards from Tivon, as part of this vote and acceptance of increasing state aid, so basically what they did was redo the funding formula, and Tivon received an extra $62,000. So since we never budgeted the 62,000, I'm asking school committee approval if you agree to put that part of the deficit. So in the deferred revenue column is list 301,781. So that brings our grand total FY25 deficit down to 1.1 million as of today. Again, as you know, most invoices are still incoming, so this does, this 1.1 does in fact give a estimate on those incoming invoices that we are expecting. I, I pray and hope there's not anything out of sight, out of mind type deal where was forgotten or whatever the case may be. But right now, 1.1 million, and I never say final until the audit's final. So I will continue using the word estimated FY25 deficit. As you can tell, I've communicated all along that we would be around 900,000 is my last quarter four memo. Section E kind of explains those missed expenditures or unpredictable costs. Out of district tuition mostly has to do with special education out of district placements. We had a rise in that this school year. Correlation to that is the transportation to bring these students to the out of district placement. Obviously, with the increase in enrollment and the out of district placement comes the cost of transportation. Lunch fund, I just spoke about a little bit. That is an estimated deficit as well. We actually just received the June invoice today. And then we have some other pending items that we have discussed as a school committee and executive session, but. So again, I, I never use the word final until it's final through an audit process, so I'll continue using estimated deficit for lunch fund as well. Special ed services, this may be operational therapy, physical therapy, one-on-one student assistance, et cetera. That had an increase of 195,000. Salary substitutes did increase 118,000. We had multiple, multiple maternity leaves this year, more than previous years, unfortunately. And then all other areas was really 28,537. So altogether, spent, missed expenditures versus the original budget and the projected budget from October was 878,761. So I was in line with my $900,000 quarter four projection that I've been providing. Unfortunately, what I missed between the 900 and the 1.1 was this additional revenue loss that was unexpected and came known within the last couple of weeks, unfortunately. Really, the biggest one was the Eback sale, which we just got word, I think it was either this, it was this past Friday or the Friday before, so within the next, within the last two weeks. So next step is obviously to answer any questions, but we are currently evaluating, again, any additional expenditures, and we are monitoring, implementing, preventing further erosion of the financial position. I can't say, obviously, this is my first year end in my first budget process for FY26, but I am comfortable that we did prevent erosion going into FY26. One of the reasons that's tough and unpredictable course is state, anything to do with special ed really, whether it's a service or transportation or placement. Sarah and her team have rounded up every dollar. We're very comfortable going into FY26. As you know, we, we opted out of statewide transportation, and we brought it in-house with first student, saving approximately $200,000. And any increase in enrollment for special ed, we would be able to work with first student on that. It's a little tougher to work with statewide. Those prices increase pretty quickly and drastically. And then special ed services, with comparing FY25 to 26, which is the next agenda item, you'll see we actually have an increase versus what the FY24, 25 projection is. So that's why I'm comfortable. Seeing an increase in FY26 versus 25 gives you a conservative edge. And the final next step is, again, discuss the final reduction plan with the school committee members and the town council that are part of that subcommittee, along with the admin leadership team here. Any questions?
Chair, Farner. I was not there last night. For those of you that were, or you, Brendan, who's on the subcommittee?
So that's up to the school committee to decide, obviously, but it's almost like what we did in the past, Deb. It would be the vice chair, chairman of the school committee, vice president of the town council, president of the town council, Mr. Haskins, myself, Denise Charette, the town treasurer, town administrator, legal counsel, Mr. Scungio, along with their legal counsel.
Just one correction. There was no mention of the vice chair or vice president last night, and so I'm not sure.
Okay.
If there was an intention to include or not.
All right. I do apologize. I didn't, I didn't catch that.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I did want to make mention of this because the town council did speak to it as their last agenda item late last night.
Yes, and I did watch it late as well. I wasn't, and I was there for the beginning, and I had left, and I watched the remaining at home.
I stayed to the bitter end. Anyway.
So the subcommittee is set, and then meetings will be set, or we're still working on that?
So they just had approval to form that subcommittee to kind of have, the reason I was giving you answers is basically how we met last time in town administrator's office.
Yeah, and that's fine. However, it's set, but so it's.
We don't have any meetings on the calendar. Yep.
No, Mr. Edwards mentioned that he, you know, he'd like us to meet sooner rather than later, and of course, we're heading into a little bit of a choppy time when people are going to be out.
Yes.
So it's going to be kind of interesting trying to get everyone together on the same day.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll work through it. And the one thing I will tell you all is that when we do have this meeting, I will report back to this committee 100% of what transpired. You know, this is not a, a closed-door session, but it, it is meant to manage the size of the group so that we can just get to the, the topics at hand and get to some kind of an agreement on how we're going to handle this.
Yeah.
It's uncharted waters for all of us.
And to add to that, Chairman, is obviously the final memo is also going to be presented and approved by both bodies, so.
Understood. So then further, how long do we have per state law or the auditor, auditor general to come up with something?
So interesting. The order general has been communicating with me specifically, and I've been providing updates regularly. They've been pretty lenient with Tivon because out of all the districts in Rhode Island, I think it's plus 11 right now that are in a deficit, we're one of the lowest. So their focus is on the Johnsons that are close to $6 million, the Coventry's that are close to $5, $6 million, the Warwick's at $9 million, you know, so. Basically, we do have to provide a final reduction plan. We've kind of already passed that date in the, in Rhode Island general law.
But they're just being very flexible about when we do that.
Yes, they're being very flexible with us. Yep.
And, and are you giving, you're giving them obviously updates, so they know that we're meeting, they know that we're talking?
Yeah, almost the same memo that's provided here was pretty much, yeah, provided to the order general.
And then your section D, where you're recommending that these things sort of be set aside for deficit reduction. I realize we're not there, but since we're talking deficit reduction, is your thinking then, as well, Brendan, going into FY26, if you start seeing areas of savings or area, would you, would you, obviously, you don't know in September, you're going to know better in March, but are you thinking same thing? Any, anytime we kind of, if we can underspend the budget, you, you would more likely than not be recommending we set it aside for deficit reduction?
Yeah, my approach, my approach and recommendation would be, obviously, the school department needs this, we need to build a new fund balance for this, for this unexpected area. However, my thought is to kind of get rid of this deficit as quickly as we can.
And then go forward building after we've sort of settled our debts, if you will? Okay. That's all I have right now. Diane, thank you.
Thank you, Deb. So we had, focusing specifically on Eback and their region, you had projected 425,000 for Eback, and the actual came in at 250 or a deficit of 175,000. But at this point, we're only expecting an additional 100. What about that 75,000 delta?
So unfortunately, Mr. Haskins asked the same question when he came on board. I wasn't part of those meetings, but this was the, this was the communication I received when Dr. Senkione would attend those meetings. I'm not sure why, or, you know, I'm not sure what happened during those meetings as Eback was presenting. I can't say, Dr. Senkione has presented that number to the board quite a few times, so you might recall that number.
No, it's not a new number.
Yeah, so why we had a miss, unfortunately, I didn't really, really receive a great answer. I did ask the question. But as you can tell, they do have a skeleton crew. They, they have dissolved, but right now, they're just working off the board of directors. And even so, to your point, Chairman, is, Chairwoman, excuse me, is they're still giving me a range of what they're going to return. So I think that's the miscommunication is the business manager that's working with the board of directors, we're still getting a range. So I'm giving you a conservative number. I could be off as well. We might see a check for 75,000, you know, so.
Well, we could see a check for 175?
Oh, we could see a check for 125. They gave us a range of 75 to 125, so. I'm just giving you a middle number right now. Same thing with Newport collaboration. That check could be 25 or 75, so I'm kind of giving you the middle roadmap.
And what's the anticipated timeframe on that one?
Seven, July 23rd, 23rd is their next meeting. Chris is actually going to try to contact them to see if he can join, because the board of directors is made up as superintendents, and Dr. Senkione used to be involved, so Chris is hoping to maybe be involved in the next meeting to get more answers.
Okay. And I would just quickly, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I will, Mr. Scungio, do you have anything to add on, on the Eback topic?
I think they're waiting for the final numbers. Karen Corr is the business manager. She's very conservative. I know there was an outstanding employment claim that is just about, if not settled. It settled a little higher than was originally projected, but not enough to make that kind of change in, in the figures. And I also know they recently, recently received a tax credit in terms of cash. I'm not sure that that has been worked into those figures yet.
Perfect.
So I, I think there are some positives there. But as Brendan said, that'll become more apparent, I think, within a couple of, a couple of weeks, if not a month or so.
Okay.
Yep. I'm just providing the same communication I'm receiving now, so.
Okay. It, it's just, you know, understanding from our position, we have nothing to rely on in writing on, on any of this.
Yeah, like I said, I.
... we fought on that as far as the, the process out, there will be a final audit that will show how long money was distributed.
Oh, that'll be nice. Yeah, that would be good.
Thank you.
And that's the same. I did mention that for Newport collaboration. I did know that, that there would be a final audit with the consulting service team, so we'd be able to provide that as well. But that, there is a pending lawsuit there as well, so that money's being held for a little bit.
With that one, there are a couple of issues. One is there are some O P A benefits that the town of Middleton is holding cash for. There are also some questions still with respect to salary. The payroll company hadn't given the collaborative sufficient information for them to feel comfortable with any additional O P A benefits that there might be. So we're trying to resolve that issue right now.
Thank you.
Also, you'll receive a final audit on that one as well.
The City of Fall River student tuition, I understand what's behind all of that, and that's something we'll have to have that discussion with the town council. With regard to the state aid increase that came in last minute, that went to all, all districts, including ours, I would like some time to think about what we would do with that increase, because that is meant to help our students. And I would, I, I mean, I'm just leaning this way right now, and I, the rest of the committee would need to weigh in on what their preference is. But I would like to see that as part of our fund balance as opposed to part of the deficit payback, because it's, it really is meant for this year's operating. And whereas we are so tight, and again, you know, any newly unexpected special ed students move in, we, you know, I, I don't want to see us experiencing future deficits really ever. And so I think, you know, before we make any decisions on that, I think the school committee needs to debate what's best for our students on that. The lunch fund issue, you know, every year again, we, we've looked at this and, and we've chronically been running a deficit in the lunch fund, but it seems like this year now, we have to pay up. We don't have federal funds to pay for it, and that was not expected. And certainly, moving forward, again, that's another point of fiscal responsibility that we have to take, right? To, to try to break even or come as close as we possibly can on that lunch fund, whether it be through enhanced collections or, you know, making sure that we're raising prices when we should raise prices, et cetera. That's really all I have here. I'm looking forward to getting with the town council and coming up with what this plan ultimately will be. I don't think we have any votes to take on this. Does anyone else have any questions or comments to make on the budget?
I just was wondering what happened, why did we lose the federal grant? The $28,719?
Unfortunately, that was when the federal, federal government decided to reject many grants. That's all part of the federal process. Unfortunately, I don't have the answers of why we were rejected, but I can say that at least we were back into the drawing board and were accepted for a $26,000 grant for FY26. So when you, when you're working with the federal government, you don't really get much answers other than you're accepted, rejected, and then you receive the money in the bank account, and you jump up and down, so.
Are you confident the funding will come through on this approval for FY26?
Yes, we are. Danny Andrade, the grant I'm speaking of, he's the one, that's the one grant he spoke about a couple meetings ago. That's to offset the cybersecurity softwares for the future. So we have.
We probably should practice making sure we have funds in hand before we make any purchases?
Yeah, again, that was a grant that, before I came on board, but it was a approval, and then, you know, the debacle in March.
Yeah, no, understood.
Yeah, that was, no one, it's kind of like COVID. No one was prepared for that much, you know? Even the title of my grants were up in the air in March, so.
Trying to think of ways to avoid making mistakes in the future.
You don't spend money till you receive it. That's my motto, so. And that's the motto I'm using, so.
Great.
Brendan, on page two, you mentioned one-time fund balance usage under next steps and recommendations.
Yep. Yep.
We don't have a fund balance, do we?
So fund balances, basically, that's just mentioning many different avenues. So for example, that would be City of Fall River student tuition. FY '26 state aid. So again, that's one time. It's not-
Medicare?
Medicaid, et cetera, but if we weren't, to Diane's point, if the school committee didn't decide to use FY '26 state aid, that would roll into your fund balance essentially because we don't have a budget, you know what I mean? So that's the type of one-time fund balance usages I'm speaking about.
And what was the state funding this year? It went down last year, what, 1.2 million?
Yeah, we, we made 65,000 from earlier, and then we just got this additional 62,000. So 120,000 or so, 30, yeah. So, and I'm actually happy with that.
We balanced the budget with the original.
We balanced the budget with the original, yes. Fortunately, Kim, I'm actually happy with that because, as you know, decline in enrollment. But high-end special ed, as we saw with most of the miss of FY '25, that's what increased our state aid this year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No problem.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. All right, next up, we have item I, FY '26 capital request for future Tiverton Town Council gaming allocation meeting. Mr. Andrade?
Thank you. So we have not got a date scheduled. Preliminary conversations, actually, today with the Town Administrator Patrick Jones. Seems like we might be having a mid to late August meeting. Originally, it was early August, so that's why I wanted to get this on the agenda, so we're prepared to go in front of the Town Council with school committee approval. So as of today, Mr. Jones advised me that it's probably mid to late August. The school committee did change their future meeting, which Chairperson Fonworth will discuss. So there might be one or two more requests to this list. One actually came up today, which I'll get to in a second because it affects this list. But really, going through the list, majority of these have already been approved in prior council meetings. Same thing as the federal grant. The Town Council did not, they basically, they basically tabled all these requests because of federal funding again. As you might know, the landfill was put on hold for 1.4 million, so the council made the right decision to hold all capital requests regarding waiting on that landfill transfer. So so student records, as we all know, we're still using inefficient or unreliable microfiche system that we need to improve. We need to improve-
Before you go any further-
Oh, go ahead.
We've already approved which one of these items, because I know that microfiche is one of them.
Correct. Microfiche is one of them. The fences at THS baseball fields, touch views, that price did come down because of Fort Barton. And that's it. So the student records for 11,000, the fences for 3,000, and the touch views for 205,000 have already been prior approval.
Okay, so what I'm gonna ask is that we table this tonight.
Okay.
And not that I don't want to have this discussion, but you made mention of the fact that we may actually be adding to this list.
Yeah, we-
And I would like to see it separated, so between those items that we've previously approved.
New request, approved or something.
New request, et cetera, yeah. This way, there's less confusion. Working off of memos is a little tough sometimes, so if you can at least break it out so that we know which ones were previously approved by us already and submitted. And I mean, I understand you're gonna take the whole thing to them.
I mean, maybe prior approved by school committee and subtotal and then new below it somehow, just so we know.
Yeah, absolutely. I do try to make my memos so it's easier to transfer between the school committee and Town Council, of course.
No, I agree.
I can definitely do that.
If you could. And then if there's something else for you to add, we can take it up at our next meeting.
Yep. So hopefully, I get the, based on discussion today, hopefully, we have that meeting in the soon future, and I'll have that next, that other item for you guys on August 5th.
Thank you.
Brendan, you know, however it's easy, I understand you're trying to give these, so maybe if it's A is prior approval and B is needs to, you know, new to you, whatever code you want to use so that it's easy for you. We don't want to create more work, but to Diane's point, it's really-
Absolutely agree. Of course, I'm going through the list of, you know, paper shuffle between Dr. Senkione and I, so. But.
Okay. Just take the time and-
Yeah, we have time because-
Do you need a motion, Diane?
Do I, do we want a motion to table item six I?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. Thank you, Brendan. And thank you, everyone. All right, next up, six J, FY '26 revenue and budget adoption.
Thank you. So as you know, we went through the budget quite a few times, one in the auditorium back in March, and then we did it again here in the library a few meetings. But basically, now that the Town Council has adopted the final appropriation as of June 30th, the school committee by Rhode Island General Law has 30 days after that date to adopt. So I'm here today with our only July meeting to ask for the final approval. As you'll see, some line items did change from the last time you've seen it. Obviously, as you may know, that, that occurs through the last minute of a budget process with everything that's happening through the school year, especially during the summer of a school year. So as of right now, if you flip to page three, I'll explain some of this usage. But if you flip to page three, it starts with FY '26 financial plan. Might be page four in your packet. It looks like this, with operating budget in yellow on the top. Page four, sorry. So operating budget is 35.6 million. To get to that number, it's a town contribution of 29.2, state aid of 5.9, the town gaming revenue to offset the operating budget of 312,000. Gets you to 35.5 million rounding, a variance of 153,000. So the reason I am requesting usage of incoming Medicaid in FY '26 and usage of CTE tuition revenue in FY '26 is because of, last time, the late, the last update you received was on May 16th. From that time to present, our audit district tuition, whether it's CTE tuition or audit district placements, have increased 85,600. Special Ed services increased almost 20,000. And we did see a decrease in entitlement grants. So as you may remember, when we first built this budget, we planned for a 10% decrease in entitlement grants based on all the information we were receiving for various parties. Right now, we're seeing a decrease of 17%, which it might even be further, which Superintendent Haskins will explain in the next agenda item. So again, year over year, decrease in entitlement grants was a 16% decrease when we planned 10%. How we come to that 153,000, again, I'm asking the support of the school committee to approve funds through Medicaid reimbursements of 65,000 and local revenue CTE tuition of 88,000. Again, this is, it's not so much a usage of one-time funds. Unfortunately, this is a usage of supporting the budget for this increased cost. But at the same time, Medicaid reimbursements always come in around 250,000. This year, we actually got 385,000. I am being conservative with Medicaid reimbursements because basically the, what, the news we're receiving from the federal government, specifically the Trump administration, is Medicaid will remain to at least October. So the 65, 65,000 is a conservative number. Through October, we usually average about 110,000 plus fees of 2,000. So that is all incorporated. So basically, we're almost taking 50% of that known Medicaid money that should come in through October. Because what it is, is the federal government needs to make a ruling, and then they have 45 days with Congress, and that goes back to administration. That kind of brings you to that October month.
So before we go any further-
Yep.
So that we can have an organized and full discussion here. I would like a motion on the floor to approve the operating budget for fiscal '26 in the amount of 35,621,743.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so now we open up for discussion. So let's talk about Medicaid balances.
Okay.
What is our Medicaid fund balance? Because that is not something I don't think that you've provided to us here.
Yep, so Medicaid fund balance was if-
As of the, as of June 30?
So June 30, we have 385,000. It's in the FY '25 deferred revenue packet, that last page. Not part of deferred revenue, but 385,849, and we received every penny of that so far.
385,849.
So my recommendation is to utilize that in FY '25 if school committee-
FY '26.
Utilize that, that number is on balance right now. So we would utilize that to offset FY '25 deficit. So really, you're talking zero dollars as of July 1st.
Gotcha.
So this 65,000 would be incoming Medicaid reimbursements for ESY summer programs starting July 1st through the remaining months of the year. Yeah. I'm using a conservative number of 65,000. That's basically what we need to offset the new operating budget of 35,621,743.
I'm gonna be very honest with you. I don't approve.
Okay.
You won't have my vote for that.
All right. So the only thing is, as you know, Madam Chair, is the unfortunate part is when you're building a budget, you have to make all your personnel changes as of June 1st. So when you do, yeah, when you do see these increases.
We have to think of other alternatives.
Yep, agreed.
We have to talk that through tonight.
So then, Madam Chair, what you're saying, if you don't approve, is you want to look to cut 153,000?
Not necessarily, no. We, you know, Mr. Andrade is recommending or planning to recommend that we pay down our deficit by 300 and some odd thousand dollars immediately based upon FY '25 results.
That's all your incoming Medicaid in FY '25, correct?
And the Medicaid funds are there for the use of our students.
Correct.
And special needs students in particular will need it the most.
Gotcha.
I hesitate to use that entire Medicaid balance for that purpose, for the purpose of deficit reduction. And I also have a problem with using any anticipated funds as part of our, it's finally, let's continue this structural deficit, correct? And, you know, until we have funds in hand, I honestly don't think we should be spending.
So then you would recommend that, in this instance, we increase the deficit by 153,000 so that we could use that revenue that we have in hand for this budget?
I would recommend that we take the state aid increase out of that deficit reduction for 60, whatever thousand dollars it was.
62,000 rounding. That's basically, yep.
And that-
The, the, the difference-
The Medicaid funding-
Less what we need. Yep.
Reduce the Medicaid-
Nope, I gotcha.
-to use for deficit reduction.
I gotcha.
We can do either way, yep.
Yep.
I understand we're responsible for paying back this deficit. But I don't want us to be in a position where it's, we're marked every single month.
Yeah, no, I agree. Like I said, I'm obviously conservative with this. I agree with that. But obviously, this Medicaid or state aid is really offsetting special ed services. That's why you're getting reimbursements, so same idea, you know what I mean?
To that point, though, if, if we take the approach that Diane just recommended, and we get to October and November, and this is in hand, then we can turn it over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have almost 50% of this incoming in July because of ESY over the summer. So that's, I'm, you know, again, I would expect the 65,000 to be in our account by September 30th.
Or, or we could do it before the end of the year, but, but understand, you know, that, you know, to your point is you don't want to use anticipated money. You would rather use monies we have in hand.
Yep, so I have no problem, you know, I can obviously find, I'll find $3,000 of the difference between state aid and Medicaid, same, same amount, basically.
Now, could you also explain this about the 30% that we have left?
Yeah, so again, when we were building the budget back in, say, January through, the last update was May 16th, we were always estimating a decrease in entitlement grants by 10%. We have received some preliminary numbers and some actual numbers for FY '26, and that was, came in at 16%. So a decrease of FY '25 entitlement grant funding through FY '26 was a decrease of about 186,000. We were projecting in our budget a 10% decrease, unfortunately, it went 16%, and that's a difference of 48,000.
So entitlement grants, Title I, Title II, IDEA, just-
Preschool, et cetera.
For people who aren't educational.
Yeah. Superintendent Haskins will get to it next agenda item, but that number might even be greater, so. But we do have recourse for that.
Okay. So the, these are the federal entitlement grants?
Yep, yep. Title I, Title II, pre-K, IDEA, et cetera, yep.
Okay.
So RIDE recently just gave, unfortunately, again, federal government held numbers very late in the game this year, and we just got them over the last two weeks.
So and, sorry to pepper you with all of these questions.
No worries. I'm happy to answer them.
Our operating budget is 153,000 higher than what the town contribution, state aid, including the gaming revenue came to.
Correct.
And we don't typically include federal grants in the operating total.
Correct.
So why are we considering the reduction of federal grants here?
There's, there's certain liabilities that we take on, excuse me, in federal grants, such as when you're budgeting, there's some salaries that are reduced, Title I salaries. We have, is it three teachers? Three teachers that are, their salaries and benefits are out of Title I. So when that gets reduced more than 10%, we need to still make up that salary because we have a liability, so it gets transferred to the general fund, the difference.
Okay. That's a great answer.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. That, that helps the light bulb go off.
Because we're not laying them up. They're still here. We just don't have the grant to supplement.
And that's the difference. If I was building a budget where if I needed 35.6 million, as you know, we're tight and personnel's really majority of our budget, I would suggest an additional one or two layoffs to match that 153,000. Unfortunately, we can't do that at this point in time.
Right.
But we still have movement throughout the summer, whether it's an audit district placement. You know, operational therapist comes back and says, hey, we had some additional students in May and June, so my FY '26 figure is a little higher, et cetera, you know? This is basically a conservative budget, again, to Chairman Fonworth's, Chairwoman's Fonworth's remarks of, I never want to be in a deficit again while I'm in the seat, so.
None of us do.
So, yeah, so.
But it's a balanced budget without relying on one-time funds.
Essentially, yes, unfortunately.
In the amounts that we have in the past.
Unfortunately, we have to be conservative based on Rhode Island General Law, and we have no options at this point in time.
Yep.
I know I stopped you.
No, that's basically it. And the same thing is, the other side of the 153 is CTE tuition. Again, in my memo, that's utilizing CTE tuition for 70% of that population. So again, being conservative, conservative, if CTE tuition students stayed in Tiverton Public Schools throughout the entire school year, that number would be greater than 88,000. So I'm utilizing 70% of that tuition. As you know, we have a couple of the revenue streams, such as early rises brings in, you know, a couple bucks at the end of the year. We have pre-K tuition that offsets general funds. We, in FY '25, that was, that amount is 29,000. We also have some Little Compton tuition through students that come here. Unfortunately, we're losing a couple of those, but they were here for the summer, so we'll gain some tuition on that. And with being conservative through all those avenues, that's going to basically help support the budget for unpredictable costs and also help support the- help support the budget for unpredictable costs and also help support the lunch fund that we just discussed. And then, I hope, uh, the team continues on. I know Lee's, Lee always does, and Principal Craven and other principals, all the principals were always looking for grants, so...
As proven this evening.
Yes, yes.
So... Apologies for being confused once again.
No worries, no worries. I know it's a lot of, lot of documents, I try to give everything.
So, revenue to support the budget, one hundred and fifty-three thousand. Medicaid reimbursement, this is your estimate using the, um, FY-26 anticipated reimbursements?
Correct.
Which, of course, you're also saying that it's a possibility the government is going to cease reimbursing?
They could, um, as of October, it's still up in the air.
Okay.
Based on Trump's administration, it's not going to happen this year, but, again, I, I wouldn't, who knows? Um, I'm confident that we will have sixty-five thousand available, though. Or, you know, as you said, usage of state aid obviously is there as well.
And the, the local revenue, CTE tuitions, is, again, just a projection?
Yeah, so, I, the reason the seventy percent number is, I'm using the tuition on students that have attended Tiverton High School for multiple years. We do have a few new students this year, and I'm not using those tuitions because of what happened FY-25. We had a couple students that came on and then went back to their home districts in January, you know, so, I'm being conservative there.
I, I mean, my, and others may disagree with me, but I, my preference would be to not leverage any anticipated revenues, but only leverage revenues we already have realized, i.e., the current Medicaid balance as a, as a source, as well as the state aid, um, increase.
Yeah.
And if we come at the end of this school year with a surplus because we have realized these revenues and hopefully more, then we can take that into account as we go into the second year of deficit reduction.
Yep. I, I agree. To play devil's advocate, I would say, CTE tuition's always a revenue stream in a school department, so that's why I would be comfortable using it, you know, kind of like your tax appropriation, doesn't mean the town will get all those taxes, but...
But if those students change their mind about attending here...
Correct.
It's gone.
Yeah.
We, there were no guarantees.
No, no, but, yeah, that's my...
As opposed to the state legislature, that once they take their vote, the money's golden.
Yep. So, I'm, oh, yeah, whatever the school committee, um, decides, I'm okay with. I'm basically just presenting to be, the operating budget today would need to make up thirty-five point six million, basically, without any possibility of, um, personnel cuts, cuts, excuse me.
I've been hogging the floor, does anyone... Did you have, did you want to continue with the rest of these pages?
Um, that's basically it, it's just giving the support to, um, the revenue and the difference of what we see between May 16th to present. Um, and basically, your line item detail, uh, you call a detail by line item, if there's any questions there. Um, I know we went over it a few times, but if there's any questions there, happy to answer, um, or just get a final approval to finalize our budget so I can prepare the documents, um, to RIDE by July 31st.
No question, but, uh, more a comment that, you know, I know there's been, you know, sort of questions about how our budgets have been and, and, you know, whether they've been increasing, decreasing as a result of, you know, declined enrollment, and I will note that the FY-26 budget is less than our FY-25 and our FY-24 budget.
Yep, we're seeing a million-dollar change.
Okay, any other questions? So... Would you want us to take a separate vote as to how we intend to fund this gap between the town's appropriation, state aid, and the budget?
I think that makes sense, Ben, do you agree?
I, we always have.
Yeah.
Um, in, in the past, we used our fund balance, we took a vote to take X out of the fund balance, uh, where we don't have that as an option this evening. Um, I would like to make a motion that we take, uh, the funds from the increase in special, uh, not, the increase in state aid.
Well, we mo, we have a motion on the floor, do you want that withdrawn, or...
That's right, let's vote to approve the bottom-line budget, and then we'll have a secondary vote to how, to funding.
So, so we, we have a motion on the floor to approve an operating budget of thirty-five million, six twenty-one, seven forty-three?
Correct. All those in favor? Okay. So, we have that part complete. So, now, as to the, how we are going to fund this thirty-five, six twenty-one, seven forty-three, we have the town's appropriation, we have the, um, the state aid, you know? Lose in my... So, we have the thirty-five, one fifty-six from the town and state aid, then we have the three hundred and twelve from capital, that's already received and voted upon. So, we need to, um, take a vote to make up the additional one hundred and fifty-three thousand. So, the second increase in state aid, I'm going to go back to the other document, Brandon.
Sixty-one thousand, seven eighty-one.
Thank you. Sixty-one thousand, seven eighty-one, so, and then, so we have one hundred and fifty-three thousand we need to make up, we're going to take out sixty-one, seven eighty-one, somebody do the math. Do not rely on me.
Should be ninety-one. Yep, ninety-one thousand?
Ninety-one...
Uh, sorry, I did round numbers. Ninety-one, two one nine.
Two one nine, okay. So, the motion is to use the additional state aid of sixty-one thousand, seven eighty-one, and use ninety-one thousand, two hundred and nineteen from our existing Medicaid balance, uh, that is, I wrote that number down, it's in excess of three hundred thousand dollars.
Almost three hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Yeah, um, to make up that additional one hundred and fifty-three thousand. Do I have that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, do I have a second? I will second that motion. Do we have any discussion?
Um, I'm, I'm going to vote against, only because, you know, anytime you're doing a budget, you're doing it sixteen, seventeen, eighteen months in advance, and it's, I mean, you know, fifteen years I've been on the committee, um, you know, sixty-five thousand and eighty-eight thousand in, um, revenue is pretty much assured. So, I don't have a problem trying to aggressively pay down the deficit with the money that we have when, you know, it, you know, it's not like it's a grant that we've applied for and we don't know we're going to get it. There, it's been a pretty steady stream, um, so I'm actually going to vote against only because I'm comfortable with the way that, um, Mr. Andrade has presented this with, uh, future funds.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of my motion? And all those against, motion fails. I'll need a new motion.
I'll make a motion to, um, use, uh, Mr. Andrade's recommendation for Medicaid and tuition, uh, to cover the, uh, gap in funding.
So, that would be eighty-eight thousand for, uh, CTE tuition and sixty-five thousand in anticipated Medicaid funding. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Clearly, I disagree, however, I will go along with it for the sake of family unity and to get this budget passed. All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. All right, so we're all set on that. Discussion of federal pause on Title II, Title III, Title IV allocations. Mr. Haskins, give us the great news.
At this time, the U.S. Department of Education has temporarily paused the disbursement of several key federal education funding streams. Title II, Supporting Effective Instruction. Title III, Language Instruction for English Learners. And Title IV, Student Support and Academic Enrichment. This pause is part of a larger federal review of entitlement funding and has placed one hundred eight thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars in federal support at risk for Tiverton Public Schools. In contrast, Title I-A, IDEA Part B, and IDEA Special Education Preschool Funds have been released and are not subject to this hold. So, that's the lion's share of entitlement funding for Tiverton. Uh, the funds that are under review, Tiverton was allocated seventy-five thousand, four hundred dollars in Title II funds. These funds were intended to support professional development and capacity building for educators and school leaders. Those planned initiatives included onboarding and instructional support for new teachers, evidence-based literacy training for K-2 staff, restorative practices, training for six faculty members, and district-wide training and assessments in social and emotional learning. For Title III, Tiverton was allocated one thousand five hundred dollars under Title III to support programs and services for multilingual learners and their families. We intended to use this funding to cover the Lexia language subscription for multilingual students, uh, which we will obviously have to shift to operational. And then, for Title IV-A, uh, Student Support and Academic Enrichment, Tiverton was allocated thirty-one thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars under Title IV-A and zero dollars under Title IV-B. Title IV-A funding was designated for the Mood Check Mental Health Screening and Intervention Program, also high-quality instructional materials for middle school social studies. Ninety percent of that cost was under the Title IV category and ten percent under operations. And site licenses for MindWise, which is part of the Science of Suicide Training, and BeSafe, which is an emergency response coordination tool. These services, MindWise and BeSafe, total approximately twelve hundred dollars and will need to be shifted to the operational budget, uh, should these, uh, dollars not be realized. Although these funds have not been permanently revoked at this time, this federal hold will delay district planning and implementation of these programs. State officials are pursuing legal action, you may have seen in the Providence Journal or Boston Globe, that Rhode Island is one of twenty states involved in a lawsuit to challenge this hold, and Rhode Island is actively engaged in advocacy efforts to expedite a resolution. Our leadership team is monitoring the situation closely. Uh, I've been on, uh, phone calls, uh, with Commissioner of Education and other superintendents, uh, on a weekly basis, and we are, um, adjusting our planning and budgeting as needed as we await further guidance from the state and federal government.
So... In total, at this time, we have how much paused?
How much paused is, uh, one hundred eight thousand, two hundred seventy-three.
And how much of that, uh, you know, it's going to hurt our kids' social, emotional supports? If it, if it sticks, it's going to hurt our ability to provide professional development for our teachers, which has become really one of the backbones of our success academically. And it's, I, I know you and I spoke about this social studies curriculum piece as well. If, if none of these funds materialize ever, how much of this are we going to be forced to put into our operating budget in a situation where we have no additional funds?
So, um, Sarah and I have reviewed that recently, and, um, so, we would need to pause the majority of these programs. Now, Lexia Literacy Subscription for Multilingual Learners would need to be shifted to the operational budget, that's twelve hundred dollars. The two site licenses, uh, total, also total fifteen hundred dollars. There are two teachers who have attended training that are under these entitlement grants, um, that would be, need to be shifted to the operational budget. We have only realized a few thousand dollars, uh, less than two thousand dollars related to those trainings. Uh, the other programs would need to be paused. Uh, the, the professional development, onboarding, and instructional support for new teachers, we would need to find a way to deliver that with our current staffing and materials.
So, four to five thousand, it sounds like, would need to be shifted, or am I not hearing that right?
I think it may be fewer than four thousand total.
Okay, and then, the rest of it would just have to be paused, which would be devastating, but it wouldn't require shifting it to the operational.
Are we able to pause the social studies curriculum?
Uh, I would need to consult with Rhode Island Department of Education about that. Ninety percent of that program is under this grant, uh, so, I, I would need to, to consult with them.
Any chances, guys, that RIDE or the state would, would come in and try to cover some of this, um, cuts in, in the federal monies, especially in Rhode Island?
There has not been a discussion that the state would provide additional resources related to this pause in funding, but certainly, the question can and will be asked.
Okay.
Uh, it's specific to the social studies program.
Oh, I would think, yeah. Okay. Well, thank you for the update, um, please do keep us apprised of, I mean, obviously, we, we all hear it on the news, just like everybody, but getting this breakdown is not something that is generally going to be available to the public in, in Tiverton, uh, unless you're aware of, of the pieces here. I know I've heard lots of, you know, Providence, 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 but Tiverton is hurting, too. Um, so, it's, we, we do have to keep our eyes on this, and it, again, it'll cost us in social, emotional learning, it'll cost us in PD, it'll cost us in a curriculum, it's, you know, this is all important stuff, and, and we just, you know, our hands right now, we're tied on it. Do what we can. All right, um, thank you very much for that update, Mr. Haskins. So, announcements and future meetings, I, I know that our next meeting had been scheduled for Tuesday, August 12th. With that said, there's going to be, um, two of us who are unavailable, myself included, to attend that, so I am recommending that we change the meeting from August 12th, uh, bring it up a week to August 5th. And what that'll do is that'll give us a three-week gap between tonight and August 5th, and then another three-week gap between that date and August 26th. Is everyone available on the 5th, I'm hoping? Yes.
It's a Tuesday, yeah?
Yeah, it's just one week earlier.
Yeah.
All right, great.
That's fine.
All right, so we will proceed with that as the plan, August 5th. Um, and then, August 26th was already scheduled, and I don't see us changing that. I would also like, and I know it's not on here, but, um, I, I'd like us to, Kim, schedule a policy subcommittee meeting sometime in August?
Okay.
Okay, um, now that Mr. Haskins will have had a little bit of an opportunity to get acclimated, um, we can, we can hit him with a first policy meeting. All righty, so, we'll now, that takes us to the end of our regular agenda. We'll now go into executive session. Any individuals being discussed in executive session have been given advanced notice and an opportunity to have such discussion and open. May I have a motion to enter executive session? a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A2, Legal Advice on Employment Claim Litigation, Rhode Island General Law 42465A2, Workshop on Collective Bargaining for Council 94, Rhode Island General Law 42465A9, NEA Grievance Hearing Regarding Pay Issue?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Mrs. Polish?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mama, yes?
Yes.
Okay. We are now in executive session. Thank you, everyone.